I ask Brian.
For live, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Welcome back, everybody. Today is December 27th. We're in the afternoon session. It's one o'clock. Our next agenda item is update on commissioner boards. And I don't know who wants to go first.
I don't have a whole lot to report. I missed a couple of meetings that I had where I had conflicts this month. But winter recreation forum this month was, I think you guys kind of got the gist of that. We talked a little bit about it. Parking lots are a big issue overcrowding in the recreational portals and kind of where we're going with those.
What did the rep board say about that? You were concerned about parking up there. What did, what did that winter recreation?
It's kind of mixed. I mean, I think it's, it's several people who see that there's already a lot of conflict in that area, a lot of folks in that area. And then, you know, the Forest Service is sort of taking a very cautious stance right now. They've got the Brundage expansion that they're looking at, you know, for the upper elevation lot, which is kind of one of the two main lots that they're looking at right now. And so they're looking at that as like big picture. What are we going to do as Brundage wants to expand? There's talk about changing that whole Goose Lake Road from the parking lot out to your Brundage reservoir, past Brundage Mountain Resort right now. But I think, you know, I think it's just kind of mixed, you know? The snowmobile motorized users want more access in that area. But they also appreciate that there's already a lot of stuff going on up there. You know, I mentioned before, but there's Catski operation, there's ski resort proper. There's an area that's designated for backcountry ski use in that area that gets back. The only access is to come back on the road to the resort. And then there's two snowmobile outfitters that are currently working out of that area as well. So there is a lot of traffic back there.
Did you get the emails on the gal that was complaining about all the snowmobiles on Bear Basin trails?
Uh, yeah, that's in the.
Talk about that?
I, no, that didn't even, that came out after winter wreck this month, and I didn't hear any complaints. I mean, they were just getting the grooming started at our meeting this, this month.
Me, that seemed like a signage issue. Maybe the snowmobiles don't know.
Yeah, they have a lot of signs. I was just talking to Larry when he was in here earlier.
Go anywhere.
There are signs all up and down the Brundage Bear Basin Road, which is the 451 road. And really, I think the only place that there's not a lot of signage is on the backside, which is the Thorn Creek Road, 452. And there's a thick band of trees. So you'd really have to work to get down into the trail system from there. There's some other routes that you could probably kind of wiggle through, but they have it pretty well signed out there. I'm not really sure where that all came from. I saw the article in the paper last week, which was the first I'd heard of it.
Larry was in here and said that the guy that grims that hasn't had any issues, so he's going to let, write a letter of response to that, that letter, so.
Well, we have, we used to have issues on our, you know, we finally got some signage up and it stopped.
Yeah, it has been a problem in years past. You know, whatever it was, four or five years ago, they really helped the signs, signage along that 451 road. And I think, you know, the word has gotten out that that's a Nordic area, starting part of the group's snowmobile trails.
Is that pretty crowded though in the weekends? Is the parking lots full?
Yes.
See, and it's kind of like every amenity we have is person at the seams. And, you know, it's like a Barton put in for the rafters. You kind of have to let them self-regulate after a while. They're just going to have to go somewhere else. Otherwise, you're going to wait there for an hour to get launched or whatever. I don't know how to solve it. That's a tough dilemma. You go build more, give the staff, more people.
Luckily, that, most of that's going to be resolved by the Forest Service. It's just an ongoing issue. I mean, as we know, all of our parking lots, like you said, are bursting at the seams. And the places where we don't even have parking lots are bursting at the seams and busy when it's busy. See what the rest of the winter looks like. I can't remember if I had sent you guys the, the big thing with like the Stipendite Gold Project right now, they keep canceling the, every biweekly meetings. But not a lot of new information coming out, but they had the comments and I believe that I had sent those to you, but I couldn't remember. I'll go back through and double check. And they're just comments on transportation and then there are comments that were compiled on kind of socioeconomic impacts. And they're looking for us to provide comments by the middle of January for those. So I was going to get.
I don't remember getting those.
Okay.
I don't either, David. That would be great to get them if you could resend them.
Yeah, I was going to say, and Larry and Jeff are both going to need to review those as well.
Does Larry ever comment?
Uh, he gave us a little bit of information, but one of the big things that I noticed that came out of the comments that I got was that they made no mention of winter recreation. They talk about summer recreation quite a bit, but they don't talk about any of the impacts to winter recreation in there. So definitely need to get some of those comments in there, make sure that Larry comments on that. And that as we have things that we see, we can compile a list of comments that we want to get back in there as well.
And they pretty well made up their mind on the Burt log access.
Uh, nothing's been decided yet. I think from what I understand that the Burt log access probably poses fewer hazards to the water sheds. It's going to provide some other challenges, but that would just be speculation of mine for it. They haven't made any decisions on it.
Need to respond on housing. And Perpetua has been asking, you know, what do you want from us on housing? And I had.
Well, the whole bunch of, of your own.
Well, I'd asked, talked to Cindy about it, and she said, they need to do a study, find out what's needed and bring us a proposal. But I, I don't know. It's so.
Remember the comment they made on the, you know, Scott Valley, we're just going to pay our people more so they can afford to compete?
I think that was before we.
That's not going to solve this.
I think that was before the housing crunch got to the point where it flew.
So we do need to have, you know, conversation about that.
I agree. I, I think that would be maybe something like we could invite them into.
I think so too. We need to get on an agenda for an upcoming meeting and just have a conversation about housing in general.
I'm not sure if the timeline on that might be better once we get a little.
A little bit further down.
Yeah, a little further down the permitting process.
If we only have until the middle of, of January to make these comments, we got to be ahead of that.
Yeah, and those are not going to be at that scale. These are going to be broader scale comments, you know? What impacts are we concerned that they missed in these, in these notes that they've compiled? And then is there anything else that we want to discuss? You know, like I said, going through them, and it's not a lot of reading. There's a huge document and there's only really two or three chapters that apply to us. Rest of it's on water quality and air quality and things like that. Certainly, we're not going to get involved on that level. Technical questions.
Did they talk at all about the, the future expansion, more, more mining towards the north up Sugar Creek? That other company, is that?
No, that's a.
Another application?
That's a whole other application.
Okay. So I know they threw that out there. Why would you throw that out in this if?
This is just, yeah, right now, this is just the Perpetua, you know, proposal.
Stipendite side itself.
Stipendite side itself. Yeah, and the only other thing I've really been working a lot on is waterways. I kind of stepped back a little bit from the, you know, Payette and the leasing proposal. You know, based on what we were, what we were doing, there was a point where we were going to probably need to make a decision on it. So I thought it'd be best in my interest to step back and Recreation has stepped back in on that.
Perfect.
And it sounds like we're getting close, you know, to having a proposal put together to give to IDL for a lease.
Yeah, I see some of the figures, some of the leases, no version. Sounds like they're going forward. Awesome.
Where are we on the waterways plan?
And that was the last thing I was going to bring up is that Waterways Management Plan is ongoing. We meet every two weeks with that. Right now, where we are is that Logan Simpson is putting together kind of a map of sensitive areas, like the wildlife management areas that are around Cascade, the non-motorized sections of the North Fork and Payette. Then areas that were brought up during the comments and data collection period of, you know, areas that people like to go and just paddleboard. Or people who were motorized users said, you know, these are the areas that we frequent the most. This area doesn't hold any interest to us. And so they've started kind of putting these place markers on a map. They're working on getting us some deliverables in the next couple of weeks that will start pointing towards recommendations. They've gone through and gathered all of the ordinances that they could find that pertain to, you know, especially to the enhanced weight technology boats. So they're looking at, you know, other ordinances in the state of Idaho and then beyond as well. And they have a list of those that we went through last meeting. And basically, you know, we've talked a lot about what is it that we want from them as a product, a final product? And what we asked them to do was to give us, you know, clear recommendations.
Based on science.
That's what we hired them on. Yeah, and so there's a technical advisory committee that's still meeting regularly as well. And that was my input at the last meeting is that, you know, these are not decisions that we're making in this small group, this steering committee. It's, you know, we want to make sure that the technical advisory group has had a chance to go through and review, you know, all the, all the studies. And then each one of those members has got a chance to give feedback back before we see anything from them.
But will be based on science, not just.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're looking at, you know, again, it goes back to like, you know, the social and the scientific factors. I will say, you know, and this is them coming up with recommendations and ordinances from other places is that they're, it's going to be, I think it's going to be very complex. There's going to be a lot of different kinds of areas. There are going to be areas where we have, you know, state statute is going to say, you know, a hundred feet. And there are going to be areas where they believe that we should be at more than 500.
They talk at all about boat size? Do we mean the, the size of the boat on water body?
No, we haven't talked about the size because I haven't really read or seen, and I don't think there's been any studies done on the size of the vessel. It's more on the type of use of the vessel and how those are configured. You know, they, they sent us some information early on and we've seen some of the presentations. We talked about the weight boats generating more of a downward force in the water column rather than just, you know, horizontal. So especially with Lake Cascade where we're talking about, you know, sediments that.
Shallow stuff.
Don't want to disturb. There's probably going to be some recommendations for bigger buffers around the edge of the lake where we have shallow water.
Just worried that we were going to. Sometimes we can take a plan and it just becomes really surface and, you know, they're, they're getting the data that they want to get. And I just want to make sure it's based on science.
I think, yes, I think one of the really good things is that we have a really good balance on the steering committee, like Mike Machazek from City Council, is really, really connected to the power voting scene. And I think that there's a good representation of views. And then also, you know, with the different, we've got Michelle Roosevelt, Planners, Cindy, myself. I think it's a pretty good spectrum of, of folks. And that's just, you know, like I said, that's just the steering committee. So we'll have, I think, a very good recommendation once we get this thing finished. We've got another year.
So you don't think we'll have anything before this summer?
There's, they're going to probably start to have some, the basics put together. And the idea would be is that we have outlines of the plan and then we take that back to the public. So we can get some public input on that before they finish their report.
Yeah, it would actually probably be good to extend it through this next summer and get it into the next season. Like, there's a bunch of stuffs.
Well, and as I say, the, the existing ordinance is, is doing a good job. There were some things that we missed and we put it, put it together. But it's doing a good job right now. And I think going into the second year with it, you know, education is going to be a ongoing. I think they did a good job. The sheriff deputies did a good job last year of starting that education process. Signage, things like that that we improved on. What we have heard again and again through the surveys is everybody wants to see more buoys. So I think something that we're going to have to look at is the buoys contractor, because the sheriff's deputies don't have time for that, time for that. As far as, you know, maintaining them, you know, getting them out, it seems to be like they, you know, they get them out and pull them back in when they need to. But this is going to be an ongoing thing, especially on Cascade where we're moving those things probably during the year.
And other people will be trying to move them?
Well, they're, they're expensive. I know that. Gosh, gosh, they cost a lot of money. It is what it is. Are you still involved with Payette Forest Coalition?
I have, yeah.
They doing much anything now?
You know, a lot of it is shared stewardship, talking about those, you know, heavy, heavy focus on the west side over here in Adams County. And the interface coming into Valley County, like on the Goose Creek area. Get rid of, you know, insect damaged timber that's in there. And then, you know, basically figuring out what they're going to do with the rest of it. Recreation has been a huge topic for the last three months.
Years.
It seems like more so in this three-month period because there are a number of proposals that are up for comments over the next month. Pertaining to like the greater Bear Basin area and then expansion of some other trail systems. They're looking at a little bit more big picture planning when they're looking at recreation instead of like project by project. Putting them in some of those landscape level projects instead of just standalone. But they're also, at least in McCall, district on the Payette, pulling those out and giving the Rangers an opportunity to write a CE or do a CE rather than wait for the NEPA to go through on these bigger projects. So I think they seem like they're pretty willing to do that up there. I, you know, I.
That's a, that's a big start, but however, like in our situation with Seagen, we did the CE and then, and ICL was there the whole time, agreed to all of it. And now they come back and said, no, you guys got a new NEPA. So just stop that whole. Meanwhile, there's more red trees showing up everywhere. Kind of sad.
Yeah, a lot of stuff that we're doing with the, you know, Firewise program too. Overlaps a lot with Stephanie Nelson's projects that we're doing. And we have a lot of signs up in the north end of the valley right now that say Valley County Firewise Project, Jug Mountain's ongoing with theirs. But that's been the other thing that's been a big topic in the Forest Coalition.
Yeah, I wish we could get something started down, down here at this end of valley on the Firewise. Like in the area that I keep thinking, we're not close enough to the Minister of Forest for it to qualify. But if we, if people down here could see what is going on, I think we'd have more, a lot more people in that program.
I think, you know, what they've got going on the west side of McCall right now is, and in Tamrock area too, is, is going to be really high visibility. People see the improved forest, you know, system that's going on along the side of the highway and then up in the Bear Basin area and west down into the Umeedos Valley. And I think that people are going to be more excited to see some of that happen, especially when they find out that, you know, that's all private property essentially that we're working on.
It doesn't cost them anything.
Right.
I'll go next. Between Doug and I, the magistrate commission, we did pick another judge here, what, a month ago, Doug, three weeks ago?
Sir.
Something like that. And she was a magistrate out of District Three out of Kenney County. A pretty smart gal. And we have, I think, two more to pick this summer. Probably start here next month on interviews. The roleless commission, we came back and looked at all the different Forest Service proposals throughout the state where they want to impact roleless areas. And probably, I don't know, eighty percent of the projects are control burns. And it's timber that's not merchantable. It's not, you know, there's not much value in it. But it's all red, dead, and, and so they want to do a lot of control burns. I think it averaged out about 500,000 acres a year. And I don't know how that's going to work, public relation wise with the public. I think the public's going to say, no, wait a minute. We've encouraged them to find other ways to treat that Woody bomb mass besides burning it, whether it's masticate and leave it on the ground. But in order to do that, the roleless area, you got to put in temp roads and then you got to, when you come out, you tear the roads back out, make them safe. And in the one area we did talk about was the road from Yellow Pine up to Meadow Creek Lookout. And we did not approve that process. No, we're not going to let that happen. Because folks in Yellow Pine can go around and go up Burt Log to get into the back country. That's the main reason. I know there's a four-wheeler trail through it now that Forest Service is supposed to be, I'm hoping, working on closing that down. But the folks in Yellow Pine don't want to have to do the big loop to get, you know, further on in the back country. And there's probably three people that do that from Yellow Pine. And so we kind of shut a lot of that stuff down.
You're talking about the trail that goes from like Horse Heaven Saddle up to the lookout? Yeah, we've looked for that. I've been up there a couple of times now and I've looked for it and haven't been able to find any old trail up there at all.
Good, good. That's a really interesting board. There was like fifteen of us on it and there's only been like eight show up. And so we're kind of making the decisions for a lot of, a lot of Forest Service activities. Panhandle is doing, there's pretty much staying out of the roleless areas. There's a lot of logging, a lot more logging going on in North Idaho than there is down here. They have the loggers, they have the mills and infrastructure. The guys over in Eastern Idaho, the forest over there, I don't know what they're going to do because it's too far to haul logs. Can't afford, so we talked about where you're going to have to start paying subsidizing those sales. You can't find anybody to bet on the sales. You could turn them into a firewood and a postal pole thing, but there's just not enough public to use up that much in trees. They're trying to figure out a way they can go for grants to get a mill back in and try and build that industry back over in Eastern Idaho. But I don't think it's going to happen. Take a lot of work.
Not really prime timberland either.
Yeah. Yeah, LAPC and EMS went fine this year, just your standard kind of yearly kind of a deal or quarterly kind of a deal. And when we do a swap here next month, they'll be willing, if somebody else wanted to go, those are easy peasy. You can do them online. And it just kind of tells you what's going on in communications and dispatch and, and the repeaters. And then EMS is more trained for like paramedics and staff shortages and grant funding, that kind of stuff and what they're working on. I know Cascade is working on getting something back in Yellow Pine. Those folks have come back to Yellow Pine and there's a different mindset now and they're trying to rebuild that EMS fire thing back there again. And what else have I got? I'll think of it in a while.
You've got the CDC, the Central District.
Oh, Health Districts. Um, the Health District has been really interesting because of course everything's been Zoom. I've been going to the meetings and Russ Duke and then Mary Jane, who's a, a doctor down below. She's been on the board for a long time, made accounting. The rest of the folks have been zooming in. Howard, last meeting, Raul did come to the meeting the whole time. And the big controversy right now is mask mandates in schools. And we've tried to educate folks that, hey, this is a recommendation, whether or not your school board does it or doesn't, that's up to them. We're not mandating this anywhere. And so we're trying to make sure we PR that, that this is, this is not being done by us. This is what the school boards are doing. And we talked about, you know, Cascade School hasn't had masks all year and they seem to be controlling the virus pretty well. They do have an issue down below in the schools with the virus. Lots of younger people are coming down with it. And, you know, the big concern in the beginning was don't take it home to grandma and grandpa because they can't handle that. Well, I think everybody's, we've pretty well educated everybody on it. We need to pull back on the reins and let people run their own lives now and let the chips fall where they may. And I think we're kind of getting that way. We had a good discussion about the opioid funding. And they're really excited about trying to get some kind of a facility up here that we can. The big issue with opioid addiction, a lot of it is people don't have wheels to get to treatment. So we've talked about bus passes and we do big time down in Ada County. They give out like $80,000 worth of bus passes a year for folks to get to their counselor or whatever. And so we're trying to figure out a way we can do some of that up here and that might be used for some of that money and opioid passes for folks that need it. They're trying to build something, not only here in Valley County, but in Hillmore and Boise County as well. Boise County is, hasn't been showing up now for probably half the year to the meetings. Don't even zoom in, never hear from them. And so we'll see how that goes. As you guys know, the funding for the Health District is going to fall onto the counties at the end of March. And everybody's kind of, I'm not going to say freaked out, but they're concerned about how that's going to work and go. And of course, indigent, as we saw the day, is finally starting to kind of go away. And that will be a state function. So kind of excited to see how that goes. There's been some issues with HR, the state HR is basically still trying to have an influence on our salaries and our bonuses. And we've, we've built that into the bill and we've had to remind them that you guys are going to be out of this at the end of March. And so it's going to be a board control issue. Controllers still going to write our paychecks and still keep track of the percy and do all that for us. And, and the trade off for that is we'll still sign up the indigent folks here and get them through to the state. I think it's going to work. The big question is undocumented folks. Nobody knows how that's going to work yet. And I think some of the counties are still going to be stuck with those undocumented medical bills until they figure out how they're going to do that. Legally, the state can't do it, but the counties have to, and I don't know why. But there's still a little bit of controversy with Dr. Cole on the board and we're just letting that one run and see where it goes. There's election coming up for commissioners and they're the ones that picked that. And I'm sure it's probably going to be an election subject. People are going to want to know for those Ada County commissioners. I did get on a Public Defense Commission, kind of a subgroup, and we've been talking a lot about redoing the Public Defense Commission itself. There's, right now, there's no commissioners on there. It's all attorneys and public defenders, two public defenders on there. And it's like, we need to have county representation on there. And so Seth's been working with us to come up with a fair board that has so many commissioners, so many public defenders, so many prosecutors. Well, no, prosecutors aren't on it, but the judges and all that kind of stuff, that's still going to satisfy the lawsuit from the ACL EU that is still a good defendable public commission. But they basically do all their own rulemaking and, and we can stop the bills. And, you know, we've been getting a lot of grants for our own, for, for Scott Erickson. And we're, everybody's just sort of, okay, what happens when you guys stop doing those grants? Are we going to have to step up to fund that right now? Yes. And so we're all going, wait a minute, we have to, we need to talk about that. And so we're working on that issue as well. And we'll see, it'll be legislation that will get ran this winter and through IEC and go through the whole process. And then hopefully go and get a sponsor so that we could get more fair balance on that Public Defense Commission board. People that are actually paying the bills are on the board. And I think that's going pretty good. I did have to miss the last one because I was on another meeting on that one at that time of Boise Forest Coalition. But Kelly keeps me in the loop. Pretty interesting. What else is there? What else do I have? I think that's it.
A lot of mine is around the Economic Development Council because that's where the broadband and the housing is kind of being based out of. Broadband, I've got a proposal we'll talk about here in just a few minutes. We're making great progress on that. Our RFP came back in and we did have Zipley respond to that. We'll kind of go over that once I get a chance to spend some time on it because I just got it this morning. But there's a lot more conversation around that. The housing issue, I did meet with, the four of us met, the school, the hospital, the city and county. And you guys saw that in the paper. There was kind of a recap there. We are discussing, you know, what to do with that block over there. I need to work on a request for proposal. That's going to be in January sometime to try and solidify that. So I'll come back and put that on the agenda for approval. I sat through a conversation. It was really interesting. Juan put together a group that is going to be using a doctoral program at BSU. And it is on FEMA and emergency management for Valley County. And that came out of the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this will be our county plan. We'll be empowered and informed by this group. And we'll go, it's a whole survey. It's a whole program for Valley County. It's going to be really interesting and will help us on a lot of different areas, so.
Is that different than the Emergency Operations Plan that he's supposed to get done?
So the Emergency Operations Plan is pretty much done.
Is it?
But this is going to be a sidebar to that group and they will help us complete that plan. But a lot of it, it's coming out of FEMA and it's emergency. It's looking at the socioeconomic impacts of emergency. It's not just flood, fire, that type of thing. It's the whole thing and how you plan accordingly. So it's going to be really intriguing. I've been on the legislative committee. There's a lot of legislative work that's being done right now in anticipation of the kickoff of the legislature. I'm going to go to that conference on the seventh of January down in Boise to talk about tax policy. They're actually going to try and get legislators there to inform them and train them on tax policy before it starts. So that's going to be really interesting. The work-based learning group I'm on, I did not go to Santa Fe. That was the, right when the Omicron came out and I didn't feel comfortable traveling. So I just did it online. That work-based learning is helping to create apprenticeships in government. So there's going to be a whole opportunity for governmental agencies to create apprenticeships at the state. And so there'll be a lot more conversation about that. Pat's already engaged in that conversation. And so she's been working through the HR side of things for that. And I think. And so she's been working through the HR side of things for that. And I think that's gonna be really helpful as we move forward, so. Uh, they're looking at a lot of conversation around daycare also. The fact that our workforce is just not able to go back to work because there's no daycares out there. So the state has raised that as a, as a level of um, concern. And so that we're probably gonna be seeing some of that in the governor's race too. How do we help take care of daycare? So we can just get some people back to the workforce. That's been a problem.
They talk about subsidized daycare though. We pay a certain percentage of that cost.
It's out there. I mean, right now, that would be on the backs of the private industry. So I don't know about this government, you know, what that looks like right now, but that whole conversation is happening right now, so.
Well, the stuff I've been reading is that if you're a county employee, city employee, government employee, and you need daycare, that we pay a certain percentage of that cost.
That conversation's out there, but so is housing. A lot of the governmental agencies are having to subsidize housing costs. It's two separate things. But, yeah, so, you know, how much can we afford to subsidize? That's, that's a greater question, but. The EDC uh, is changing again. Jill Morris Chapman is going to step aside as the director. And so we are going to put out a new position for the economic, for the director of that uh, program. Uh, we'll vote on the actual job description and solidify it the second week in January and get it posted.
Stay away.
It was temporary. Yeah, she's trying to hold her job at the hospital and do that and it's just way too much work. Way overload. And she was trying to decide what direction she was gonna go, I think, but it's decided now she's gonna stay in healthcare, so. Uh, and then again, we are going to post that position finally for the housing pro and get it out also. We're not going to do it as an employee. It will be a contract, ten ninety-nine type position. But we have specific deliverables that we want to see from that. And a lot of it is, again, what's worked in other areas? How does that fit into the Idaho uh, state laws? And working with um, the other local communities. McCall has a project going on right now, but it's, it's pretty much centered in McCall. Looking at their ordinances and what they can do for local housing. But there is gonna be a large conversation started this first quarter on local housing, so. I've not been able to go to YCAP um, the last two times. It's just, it's been impossible to do that. I, yeah, it's, it's a long drive for what we're getting out of it.
We've all been there and done that.
Yep, I understand totally.
And they're still technologically not up to snuff as far as providing a good conference call.
Not at all.
Call.
So, and I've asked for that. I've asked the Fair Board to place a uh, a work session uh, on our agenda so that we can discuss the fair, we can discuss the facilities down there to see what's needed. Uh, we are going to have to work with them. They are not even having meetings right now. They just, you know, really falls off in the wintertime as far as people wanting to engage. And uh, I really want them to have an open meetings law training.
I was just gonna say, when Oki was mentioning that earlier, I was thinking about some of our other groups and that we really need, you know, at, at a minimum, like the chairman of those groups to go through that.
Yeah, it'd be great.
And I, I don't know if that's gonna be something that's recorded, recorded that they could access in their free time instead of going through it, probably which is gonna be during daylight working hours, but um, I think that's a big priority for.
The webinar should be able to get on any time.
We think so, yeah.
But they should take it, at least look at it.
I agree. I think everyone should.
It's a really issue, tough issue, Sherry, because just like you said, in the wintertime, they're gone. They don't, they don't meet. You know, spring rolls around, they start meeting some of the leaders and then it gets busier, busier, and then boom, the fair's here. It kind of dies again.
They have members of their board that are frustrated enough that if it doesn't hold us, they're gonna step aside. And these are the vibrant parts of their board.
Yeah.
So really are gonna have to work with them on finding.
The courage to run for the chairmanship and take over the leadership, not quit.
Exactly. But we are gonna have that conversation. Um, I've been working Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, we're almost down to the end of that where that can just be adopted and be done. The new committee with the capital planning. So if you and I are there, we have to do it as an open meeting law. I asked Brian. So we both can't be there.
Well, I'll just stay back and then just send you what you guys talk about.
Absolutely. We'll always keep you up to date.
I would really wanna just see the list and then maybe we can, the three of us prioritize which would be first, second, and third.
Absolutely.
You know, to me, it's gonna be a step by step. We gotta get, for example, the road department out of there before we can expand the four H before we can move extension and all that over there somewhere in a building. It's all a, everything's gotta fit together to work right.
Well, and I think what, what it will be is, you know, the first quarter, we're just gonna be looking at everything. What do, what do we own? What's it valued at? You know, what is, what's it worth? Is it something we should keep? And then it will come back as a full conversation, you know, to all of us.
And Cindy's gonna be on that so she knows where all the spots are. She's part of this.
Yeah, and I'm up to date on a lot of that too, so I know where all the parcels are. Um, so working on that in-house. And uh, we will begin our CIP process again. Doug will lead that charge this year and I think Doug, anyway, he'll send out uh, those announcements in probably February. They'll have to have their CIPs in in February so we can actually go through the entire process this year. Start to finish in a timeframe that makes sense. So we'll be getting a lot of those CIP recommendations coming. That's where I've been spending a lot of my time.
Um, one, one question about housing stuff is, have you had any conversations with folks down in Boise or legislators about altering or overhauling some of our restrictive legislation on VRBOs?
That conversation um, is coming at it from, instead of doing that, doing this. And so I think that would be more difficult to change that legislation other than adding to it. So really what we're trying for is a property tax relief fund where fifty percent, and it would be a lot tax. Uh, and that tax would be fifty percent property tax reduction. The other fifty percent is whatever the highest need is for the county. So we would make a decision on, you know, if we needed to build housing, you could use that fifty percent to build housing. So I think that's the direction that it's headed. IAC has chosen kind of that path to do it instead of changing existing legislation. And they make.
So the first thing would be though to get a county-wide lot tax.
Correct.
Then first.
Yeah.
So we need to start digging into that process. What it's gonna take so we can get it on the ballot.
So they are working with the legislature, allowing us to do it because right now we can't do it.
Can't do it right now.
So um, it's whether it's sixty percent approval or sixty-sixths. Whether it's super majority or just sixty percent. And they're working at sixty percent. So then we could take it to the voters after that. But I think that will be a high priority this year to do it that way and not impact property rate issues.
Sure. Did they talk at all about excluding cities that already do lot taxes?
I think it would be, the legislation would be um, counties to do it.
Cities wouldn't be in it then.
Right. Well, and right now, it's only resort cities. So what does that look like? I mean, they're gonna have to look at that entire conversation.
Yeah, cuz you really need this, the money that's spent in the cities to fund the lot tax. Not a lot of businesses out in the county. They're gonna raise lot taxes.
Well, you put it on short-term rentals. I mean, that's basically, you would decide what you would tax. So it would either be, yeah.
And I think the way to handle some of these Airbnbs is to set up a registration system so we know who they are.
Or we have that.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
And then if we start getting repeat violations on a particular one, whatever there's three or five violations, you're, you lose it. You lose your license for that year. I don't know, just an idea. But I know talking to some of those senators and reps down there, they love it.
I think.
Cause they all have.
Yeah, I think to do away with it is gonna be really difficult.
It's gonna be tough.
That's why it passed so quickly in the first place. Well, how do you mitigate it? And that's what we're trying to figure out is how to mitigate it. So there's gonna be a lot of conversation about that at the meeting at the end of January.
Is IAC doing anything on that? This is almost the IAC coming from them. Okay.
And the broadband conversation with IAC is um, there's so much money coming. Right now, the state is looking at putting three hundred to five hundred million into the broadband task force. But then how do you oversee that? What is the legislative process? Is that through the PUC? Is that, you know, how do you over, how do you oversee that much funding mechanisms?
Ooh, through the PUC. I don't heard that idea.
So it's, it's an essential service just like power is, just like phone is?
That would give it credibility.
It would. But we'll see what happens there. But.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I think one of the things that I keep coming back to is like housing and now daycare and uh, broadband is if there's stuff that I can be doing or Elle can be doing to help you along the way without interfering with your ability to work on it. Please let us know if there's phone calls or emails or.
Perfect. I will do that. Um, yeah, I think as we look at our, you know, our list, we need to make sure we're, we're adding to our list everything we're working on right now. Cause it's, right now, it's a heavy lift.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind, I heard the other day that Davises are hoping to handle, I think, eighty, eighty or a hundred and eighty condos by next fall built for housing. No, I don't know what they're gonna sell them for. I imagine it's gonna be more than what most people can afford up here, but you know, that's what we need is to have that competition in the housing market to hopefully these people can come up here and buy one of those and still make a note.
And we don't wanna compete against private industry, so ours will be rent restricted. I mean, their projects will not be rent restricted. And so that's, that will be, the, the deed restrictions on these will be critical to maintain that workforce housing into the future. Without deed restrictions, it's market rent. It's, you know, it's anybody's fair game.
Yep. Like, yeah, private.
Yeah, exactly. So we're gonna try and not compete against them. And I am still working on the Lake Fork deal too, so. And I have not gotten any response again from.
From Mike?
I, I'm working through Tom, so I think maybe I need to go to Mike. I think I just need to go to Tom because I can't get a response.
That's all. And I could help you with that if you need to.
We'll talk about that. All right.
Um, one question. On YCAP, are they still moved out? Are they moving out? Are they gone? Or where are they?
I, they should be gone this week. And then I told them that they could move their freezers. Um, they wanted until like the middle of January to move the freezers.
The reason I say that is I know we just bought nine hundred dollars worth of heating oil. So it's gonna be heated the rest of the winter. I'm just wondering if we should think about moving an extension and all them over there. For now. It's just something that popped in my head one night when I couldn't sleep, but.
Or we don't have to be out of there until September.
Well, they could pull the rent in thirty days. If push comes to shove, that would be the place I would recommend we send them for now until we can do something, but. I don't know if it's fair to go to them and say, you guys gotta find your own place. I don't know, it might kill the four H program.
We talked about Lake Fork.
Oh, that's right, we did. You haven't remembered that.
I think that's, that will be one of the first conversations about, you know, where we put some of those people. But we do have some opportunities for movement within the building as soon as we get the.
Doug, did you get the feeling from that last email from Mark that, you know, they're gonna jack the rent up? Would they be willing to rent it back to us for that increased rent?
I don't know. I think they.
They just want us gone.
By, yeah, the end of the contract. I think it's uh, would, I bet Mr. Picard will honor that. I mean, he indicated the end of September and I can't imagine him wanting to.
It's a better deal comes along.
Have them exit earlier than that. But I did not have a response from the uh, all of the email that I sent.
Yeah, we'll discuss that first, make sure that there's something temporary anyway.
Yeah, I don't know where else. I mean, you go up to look at Lake Fork and see what that, if that were for them. We just left there last week. I should have went and looked.
I've been in there. I mean, I think that space would be fine for them.
We just gotta go somewhere with all the stuff. Maybe the dump.
I was gonna say, I think a lot of that's bound for the dump.
The dump.
Thanks for saying.
Yeah, we don't call it dump anymore.
And I think right now, that's probably the most important things that I've been working on, so. The Naco stuff I'm following heavily on this ARPA funding. So we will need to start having some conversation about the ARPA funding for the first quarter.
Well, it sounds like Oke's gonna put something together for us too, so I don't know.
And Naco just sent out an email. I think you guys are probably on that email chain too. And they did a synopsis of what other counties are doing. So, I mean, their legal council.
See that. I was gonna ask if you could forward that to me when you get a chance.
You don't get the Naco ones?
I do, but I didn't, don't remember seeing that one and I might have just deleted it.
And it might be because I'm signed up for their monthly call.
Yeah.
And so.
As I say, I usually scan through whatever I get from them and just see what we have in there.
All right. This one's down below. I sent this to Brian to get him started on looking at it. It's within the body that you can actually hit on those. He lost out. We don't know where he went. Did you get your trailer fixed? You get the trailer fixed? That's tricky.
Actually, we're waiting for the sheriff's office to contact uh, Crip. See if they'll cover it. It's uh, pretty severe.
You have to have a police report though first.
What's that?
My uh, I, my understanding, we are waiting for a police report to be submitted.
Yeah. Right now, right now, we haven't found out exactly where it happened or how.
Have you heard any more on them moving the dispatch?
Uh, it should be go live in two weeks is my understanding.
You guys been out and about a lot? Have you had a lot of calls? Really?
That uh, last hunters, well, the one that the critter got damaged on. And we haven't had anything since then.
Oh.
Very quiet.
Yeah. Kind of spooky, actually.
No, but snowmobilers will be out, so.
Yeah.
Just skiers.
I'm just surprised that we haven't had it yet with the holiday, you know, falling the way it was. I would have thought we would have had people here. Good thing. So does Jeff have the bids for you or do you have the bids for your one?
I've got them.
Oh, you got them.
I have tried to get them to him.
Oh, got it.
We've got about two or more minutes.
Okay.
Uh, nope, he's, we're, we're behind.
I thought it was a two.
One thirty.
Huh?
One thirty.
It's all right.
Well, it's too short to hurry through it.
Just one, that's always one to move things up. Come on.
I thought it was a two. I'd have never left. Oh my God, it is. Oh, brother. Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Next item is an action item. This is opening bids for Valley County Search and Rescue. Larry, come on up.
Uh, we've got two bids, uh, one from Cascade Auto, the other one from uh, Kendall Ford. I had some questions on the one from Kendall Ford because I wasn't sure of the exact process. They were gonna bid a vehicle that was in stock. It got sold. So they were gonna do another bid. They didn't have time to get it to me in the mail, so we sent an email. I'm not, I don't know if that's kosher or.
Well, it depends on who wins the bid, I guess. Okay, this is for a two thousand twenty-two Ford F three fifty, one ton. Total cost is fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy. It has everything on it that you want, I hope. That's the part that we're missing.
I looked over the specs on it.
Okay. And then this one is from Cascade Auto.
Yes.
And this is for a new twenty-one or twenty-two full-size four-by-four one-ton chassis screw cap. So it doesn't have a bed on it.
Yep, they're, both of them are chassis, but they'll have a service box on them.
Okay. And this one came in at sixty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Six four six two four. So this was chassis screw cap, white in color. And the only thing on this one is sixteen to twenty-four weeks lead time, no delivery time guaranteed.
So one of those was for a Ford and one was a Dodge, is that?
Yep. The Ford, Kendall Ford was a, uh, let's see, where'd he go? Twenty-two Ford F three fifty.
It's, uh, it's currently in transit with the delivery for January.
The one in Kendall Ford?
Yeah.
And this one is, uh, hmm, I don't know, a little about, a little under five thousand cheaper than the one that Kathy gave us.
About that ten percent. What's the warranty on them, Larry? Do you have to take them down to the dealership to fix? What?
Yeah, yeah, for warranty work, yeah. Yeah, we'd have to take them down there.
So, I have some questions. Because Valley County is insuring all of these, I'm questioning why you guys are not having our road department purchase them and maintain them.
Because we're a private entity, basically. We're not part of the county.
Why are we insuring them?
I can't answer that.
We need to get to the bottom of that. I mean, that's my concern. You are a private entity. Uh, volunteers, there's not, you know, the oversight is not there. If we're insuring your vehicles, there's county risk if somebody gets injured. So I'm, I'm questioning the whole process. I think we need to.
Probably, if we had to pay the insurance, we'd go out of business.
The one thing too, and I can't see it on Kathy's, is this is a gas motor.
Yeah, both of them are.
So we don't have to worry about depth.
Yeah.
But Sherry makes a good point. Doug, you have any history on that? I don't, or Dave? Why, why the county?
I don't know. They've been doing it ever since I can remember.
Okay, so.
Years and years and years.
Larry, what do you guys have for vehicles right now?
What's that?
What do you guys have in your inventory as far as vehicles go right now?
We've got a, uh, twenty-twenty-one Dodge Ram, uh, two thousand one Chevy one-ton with a service box. And we were just donated a twenty-eighteen Ford F one fifty. Which it can't be used for other than just driving around, running around. It can't pull anything.
Guys, I don't know if you have concerns or not, but.
No, I'd like to find that out too. I mean, I, I was surprised when we found that out. So I mean, I definitely would like to dig into that and find out what's going on and how that arrangement came to be.
I mean, again, we aren't, you know, we're insuring vehicles where we have no idea. Are you guys doing background checks? Does anybody have any history of?
They do background checks. Uh, the sheriff's office does the background checks.
We don't P test them. So Larry, the, the F one fifty that you have, who's insuring that?
We turn all of our titles over to, uh, to Doug.
And then you get it all with Doug Caldwell and he gets them all insured.
Correct.
So we're not doing just one vehicle?
I think first of all.
I don't know, guys. I can't answer that.
I, I, I think we need to tighten our process. Because I, I am a person that looks out for the county's long-term interests and liability and litigation. And if right now, I mean, you guys don't know who damaged the trailer. I mean, somebody should have signed that trailer out when it left, so you know exactly who damaged it.
We know exactly, we know who had it. We just don't know when the damage was done, whether it was done while they had it or it was done while it was parked.
They should be able to look at it before it leaves the building and you, you know, look at it when it gets back. I mean, there's got, and that's what I'm saying, Larry, is there needs to be a process. You know, I'm not, I'm not knocking anything.
We've been discussing that here the last few days.
Okay. I think our processes need to be solidified. You know, we have no idea who's driving these vehicles because they're not checked out, they're not through our road department, you know, our, our vehicle management, uh, system and all. We're just insuring vehicles that we're giving to volunteers to go do work with. I have concerns.
I was going to say, the comment we were talking about too is like the maintenance records on them, you know, make sure that if we're, if we're
Maintaining them.
Doing the insurance is also making sure that they're being maintained properly too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, we keep everything maintained really well.
I guess the only over, the only information that I can provide is that the reason I believe that the vehicles were insured and submitted on our fixed asset, asset list is because Valley County searches and rescue is under the umbrella of the Valley County Sheriff's Office. Where I don't know is what supervision powers Valley County Sheriff's Office has over Valley County search and rescue. What policies and procedures are in place regarding that overview. But that is the reason that those vehicles have been insured with the county. It's because Valley County search and rescue technically is under the umbrella, for lack of better terms, of the Valley County Sheriff's Office.
And that makes sense.
Yeah. But to the extent of, you know, operations, I, I would rely, uh, to the sheriff's office to provide an, an overview of what that looks like.
I think what we could probably do is go to the sheriff's department and let them know that we want all these kind of things to go through the county motor pool. All these kind of purchases. So that somebody's keeping track. I'm assuming you guys are changing your own, you're keeping track of those records, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just feel like if it's taxpayer dollars, there has to be some kind of oversight.
We, we've got a lot of stuff like that trailer, uh, that was purchased with, uh, grant funds.
So the trailer that got damaged, did you guys file an insurance claim on it?
We're, we're waiting for a police report on it.
Okay.
Again, I, I'm going to defer to the sheriff's office of, of what the, what's currently being done, when they were notified of that trailer. And, um, we're waiting on some direction from the Valley County Sheriff's Office on that.
Okay. And a lot of these, I guess, are not taxpayer dollars. They come out of the Title III, but still, I mean, that's still my taxpayers. It just goes a different route, so.
Well, the insurance money is not included in the Title III funding.
Oh, got it, yeah.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
I would not think the Title III would cover the insurance, insurance on vehicles. And maybe that's something we look into. As a funding source for that.
I agree that the vehicle is, you know, is needed. Dave, can you work with Larry and, you know, you guys come up with some processes and, you know, provide that to us so that we can try and tighten this up a bit and figure out, you know, where the county's liability lies and, you know, how we can oversee some of this.
I was going to say, could you just send us like sort of a breakdown on how that is organized now?
Yeah, I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the sheriff on that and find out.
That'd be great. Yeah, I mean, I don't totally understand the process.
So Larry, Kendall Ford, um, they said that they may have it or they may sell it and.
Or it's in, it's in transit.
So you, for sure, it's coming to you guys if we buy, okay? So I'm going to make the motion then that we go ahead and award the vehicle purchased to Kendall Ford of Meridian for fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can take these with you.
Larry, you're going to need this form he's got there.
I wanted with the date on W, do you do that?
And I second that with a caveat that you work with the sheriff's department and before we purchase anymore, we've got a better process.
Got it.
Larry, if you can take these down to my office, uh, just so we can make a copy of them.
Okay.
Down to the clerk recorder's office, that'd be great.
Alright, thanks for all your work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing on the Biari is mine.
Hey, this is an action item.
I sent you guys an email this morning, um, with some screenshots on it. So this is, I'm, I'm requesting approval of this, uh, work order. And proceed with these guys for the, I think it was sixteen thousand, somewhere close to that. They actually provide a, it actually breaks it down per household. Yeah, it's a dollar per household. And it actually breaks it down to the point where from a report, we can actually look at any individual home, find out who is currently in the area servicing them and at what cost to the taxpayer. And then identify where dark fiber needs to go in order to improve that, um, that internet connection. And so these guys have just did it for Eagle and that's where all these screenshots are going from.
Just an example of what they did with the financial breakdown as well. I saw that.
And it is, I mean, it is so detailed. Yeah, I know, it's kind of like over my head, but, um, it gives us the tools that we need to progress on the broadband front. So I'm requesting approval of the work order. And it is a dollar per household approximately.
So this is getting the study done and then what would be sort of the next steps once we got the study is?
Now that RFP that we just put out
Uh-huh.
helps to identify where we need, uh, the dark fiber to go. So it actually will, will empower the next conversation. And this report is due for every single, um, grant opportunity that's out there. They want it at this level. So Mary and I and the broadband task force are going to work on.
Gotcha. No, I, I totally understand. And if that's, if that's a key component for grant request, then I'm all for it.
Yep, it is.
You gotta do it.
The EDA has tons of money out there right now. We're going to go after a very large grant to try and make this happen.
Sure, the only question I had on this is there's no end date. I mean, how soon do they have to have this done? And I was concerned about, they could take right now as long as they want.
Good question. I know that the work has to be done. I think the end of January is when the EDA grant is due. And that's their agreement that they would have that done by then.
So if you maybe could get something that says that from them, when do they think they'll be done with it? And I've looked and looked and looked. Time frame or something.
We've talked about the fact that it's there electronically just to pull the report, basically. I mean, they have to do a little bit of work, but it, it's fairly quick turnaround time. I did not look to see if there was an actual date.
And if it's under their terms of condition or terms of service, record. And somewhere. Bruce Patterson.
On his, on his computer and can answer that, but. Bruce is the one that I'm working with.
Bruce?
Uh, Bruce Patterson.
Mm-hmm.
With the, um, of the task force.
Well, they break it down to how many feet of this cable and that cable and everything, don't they?
Extremely detailed. Well, maybe because we need to get this moving sooner rather than later, we could do something about, you know, up to including and then with clarification of the end date or something. I don't know what you'd feel comfortable with.
I don't need, I don't want to stop the processor either, but you don't want this guy to be able to take all summer to do this.
Yeah. And I know that can't happen because of the time deadlines on the grants.
So you would make it a condition of approval that it's done by a certain point, whenever that, whenever the folks needed it?
As required for grant submission, maybe something like that. So that it's completed in time for grant submission.
And if you could give the, add that to the contract today or tonight or tomorrow, and then you could go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
If we approve it.
That works.
Just for our protection.
Yep.
So then I'd entertain a motion then to approve the, I don't know how to say it, Biara?
Yari.
Yari network contract.
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, approve and sign the work order for the, um, Yari networks. With the, uh, amendment that you guys were just talking about.
Okay, I'll second it. Any more discussion? Home favorite, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Certainly, amendment. Addition.
Okay, we're good there. So we're going to move on down to our agenda and our next item is also an action item. This is Bear Basin seventeen HF four, four Valley, unit fourteen amendment. Stephanie, you're on.
Hi guys, how are you? How was your holiday?
I ate too much.
I think everybody eats too much. Anyway, this won't take much time. I spent a day with IDL grant rep Tire Holstelts. And, uh, he liked what was going on at this particular unit. Uh, Baron Loper's been working on it and he wanted to see more. So this is to amend it to more. And then also, uh, we do have until the end of May, which is good because we're going to be getting several other acres done as soon as the snow allows us, so. Anyway, you should have the document there. I think we're amending it to a total of twenty-eight point five acres and, um, extending the date until May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-eight point five acres until May twenty-two. Steph, can you remind me how many acres was this in the beginning?
I think when we started out, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen acres. So we've ostensibly, yeah, we've about doubled it.
Doubled it.
Yeah. His work product is excellent, far superior to anybody else that we're dealing with, and he's willing to work on it in the wintertime, which is amazing. So I'm happy about that.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve this amendment.
I move that we approve the extension of the unit fourteen contract to twenty-eight point five acres with the extension date to May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second that.
It was May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Oh, is it say twenty-seven? Maybe I just wanted to do it before the weekend, so sorry. Yeah.
Hey, it's been moved in second and on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Done deal.
Thank you.
And, uh, we have it printed out here.
I'll get it printed, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll get it printed here and get it signed and then you can come and get it from Doug or he can forward it to you.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So at this time then, we have an opportunity for the general public to present. We don't have anyone in the audience, but we'll give it another fifteen, twenty minutes. And if no one shows, we'll recess for the day.
So Bruce says that he's pushing to have this designed done by the end of January. It might be mid-February, but since we need it for the reconnect grant. It might be mid-February, but since we need it for the reconnect grant, it's due until late January.
Have you seen, it's the EDA's Economic Adjustment Assistant Grants.
Part of their grants, what's that one for?
This one is for, it says Economic Adjustment Assistant Program, but it's five hundred million dollars. And it says for technical planning, workforce development, entrepreneurship in public works and infrastructure projects.
I think I sent this to Jill at the E C. Say, you know, if it's planning, then. I don't know that I have. If you can send me an email, I'll push that on.
Probably. Or rally.
Said he will get a revised contract, so we didn't approve to have me sign that. Do we need to do that?
Next step on the redistricting.
So, um, Brian, I'll keep myself for preparing the resolution. And once we have the wording for the resolution completed, that's all we do. It's, yeah, it's a resolution.
We had one guy, Jim Fleming, that commented on it, but.
You think he wants to run for office and that's why he's?
He just thinks he's worried about not being represented from Donley's side. It doesn't matter where you get.
Oh.
Your input.
He was the one that was very upset over the fact that I T D would not allow the backcountry road to be opened and improved prior to closure of fifty-five. I think he's only up here part-time actually, and that's why I was confused because his main address, I think, was in Boise.
Oh, really? He used to be a long time family up here.
Oh, was it? Okay, maybe I'm.
For Fleming for years and years. As long as we've been here. Maybe it's a different Jim Fleming too.
He's out on Don Drive, so.
Wants to do so. No, they're not. Still like the committee to consider going around this, but it's.
The more we can keep things in straight lines, the better it's going to be at the end of the day.
So what he's talking about, Sherry, it's this little choke right here on Dog Drive, right?
He just wants it to go this way.
But, well, he wants this included in Donley's side.
Oh, so then you'd have to take all wagging wheel.
Yeah, which changes the numbers and changes the whole.
Changes the.
He just wants the peninsula right here of Don, but I mean, still. I just don't see a reason to change that just based on if somebody there wants to run for office. Doesn't really matter.
It's just a little Don Drive, peninsula, inland. There's quite a bit of homes along there. I don't know how many of them are permanent residents.
Not very many, I don't think. But could, I mean, I know a fair number. But if that's in it, then why wouldn't you include, you know, stuff on the north side or south side?
Something out of Donley's and put it back in Cascade to balance the number out.
I think we did a good job.
I think so too, I don't. And I mean, then it almost feels like we're carving something out for somebody specifically and then that's not legal.
Are we on still?
Yes, sir.
So Doug, let's go ahead and go off at quarter after there's somebody here.